Okay. You're ready, Kim? That was called your vacancies. All right. Good morning, everybody. It is September 2nd. We are going to begin our meeting with the pledge, and ask Kevin to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Well, let's move on to item number three. Correspondence. Oh, wait, nope. Roll call.
Commissioner District One, Randy Netherland.
I'm here.
Commissioner District Two, Pat Tarzwell.
Here.
Commissioner District Three, Sharon Trask.
I think I'm here. Let's move on to item number four. Correspondence and organizational business. Do we have any correspondents to report?
We have received Transportation Improvement Program Citizens Advisory Panel, or TIPCAP, application from Andrew Flanagan and a Mason County Transit Authority Board application from Michael Richmond. We received letter from Port of Allen on considerations regarding potential extensions of Belfair Sewer Infrastructure. Received letter from Mayor Greg Wheeler of Bremerton regarding sewer service for the Puget Sound Industrial Center. Received emails from Herb Gerhardt and Randy Lewis regarding Belfair Sewer comments. Received notice of liquor license application for Belfair Convenience LLC and Grocery Outlet, Inc. Received notice of special occasion license application from Turning Point Advocacy Center. And we received letter from Steve Decker regarding family promise of Puget Sound.
All right. Great. Thank you. Let's move on to 4.2. Board of Health Vacancies News or News Release. Dave.
Good morning, Commissioner. Dave Wyndham, Mason County Public Health and Human Services. For years, Mason County Board of Health has been ahead of the rest of the state on our, how we recruit and how we organize our board. Two years ago, the state wrote a law, so changing that. So I will read from that, and it's addressing the vacancies that we have in our board. Board of Health Vacancies, Mason County Board of Health is seeking applicants for the Board of Health, BOH. The Board of Health has a position open and reserved for members of the Skokomish Tribe. The Board is looking for two representatives for consumers of public health. This category consists of county residents who have self-identified as having faced significant health inequities or as having lived experience with public health-related programs such as the Special Supplemental Nutrition Program for Women, Infants, and Children, WIC. The supplemental home visiting or treatment services is strongly encouraged. The individuals from historically marginalized or underrepresented communities are given preference. These individuals may not be elected officials and may not have any fiduciary obligation to a health facility or other agency, a health agency, and may not have a material financial interest in the rendering of health services. The Board is also recruiting for one representative of other community stakeholders. This category consists of persons representing the following types of organizations in the community. Community-based organizations or nonprofits that work with populations experiencing health inequities in the county, active, reserve, or retired armed forces members, the business community, or the environmental public health regulated community. Please contact me, David Wyndham, at 360-427-9670, extension 260, or visit https://cognitofirms.com/masoncounty2/ advisoryboardapplication to apply. If you have any other questions, please call 360-427-9670, extension 400, or email me at dwyndham@masoncountywa.gov.
Thanks, Dave. Let's move on to item number 4.3. And Commissioner Netherland, if you could.
Okay. I'll go ahead, and I'll start this one. So this, we're doing this next piece in recognition of the Green Star Award for Alfonso Mercado. Now, the Green Star Award is an award that was created before I ever even came in to be here. This is to recognize exceptional and outstanding work from staff within the county. It comes when people make a recommendation or request that it be rewarded through a citizen request. It also can come from a commissioner, but it came, this one came from a citizen and through the commissioner because of the citizens from the area. I'm going to read something into the record here. This isn't the request for the Green Star. I'll express a little bit more about what they did, but this was one of the letters that they wrote in. So if you don't mind, I'm going to read this to you and share it with you. "Good morning, Randy. I wanted to reach out and express my gratitude for all the help for the Mason County Sheriff's Office has offered to JAS these last two weeks. Detective Alfonso Mercado assisted in the execution of a warrant on 2/13 involving almost 600 animals on probable cause for animal fighting and animal cruelty in the first degree. Detective Mercado worked closely with Thurston County Detectives Burton Crowe and Regional Animal Services of King County Sergeant Moore in interviewing the suspects to gain vital information for our investigation. His bilingual interviewing skills, along with his knowledge of the animal fighting, made him an integral part of this operation. The information we gathered is not only helpful in this case, but will also aid us in investigations across the state. Last Thursday at 2:20, I was given extremely short notice and hours to gather a team and return to the scene and impound all remaining 400-plus animals. I called Detective Mercado, and within 30 minutes, he secured a team of four Mason County Sheriff's Office personnel to assist us in this response. Mason County Sheriff's Office personnel assisted with the animal handling, containment, and loading of several hundred animals in just under three hours. I am beyond grateful for Detective Mercado and the Mason County Sheriff's Office, and I could not have executed this response without their help. It is an honor to work with the Mason County Sheriff's Office, and I look forward to any future opportunities." Now, with that said, they also got ahold of us to let us know that, in a little more direct, that it could not have happened without you, that you were very, very instrumental in getting this done, and they relied heavily on you. And they wanted to call you out because literally they don't believe they would be in any position they're in now to better the lives of these, of animals, to hold people accountable for what had occurred, and to try and make sure that nothing happens again. And, as was mentioned here, to also help enforce it outside of our area. And they wanted us to know that you were instrumental to the point where she wrote a letter asking us to give you a green star in recognition after we were talking on the phone. So with that, the Commission would like to present you. Can you meet us down here? Did you come here in the middle of the hall, Wes? The Commissioners would like to recognize you for your incredible work that you've done in this community and for us with this Green Star Award.
Thank you.
We thank you very much, sir.
Yes?
Thank you. One thing about our Sheriff's Office, this is everyday excellence. We find it everywhere we go. Our Sheriff's Office is very special, and we're very lucky to have the people that we have, and we're aware of that. All you.
All right. And thank you, on behalf of all of us. Appreciate you. Oh, we, we kind of like our Sheriff's Office, too. They're okay. All right. Moving on to item number five. This is the time we set aside for citizen input. We have a 15-minute total, three minutes each person. Our county administrator will time them, ask that you, when you come to the thing, podium. Just take your name and where you're from.
The thing.
The thing. Well, they call it all sorts of things, and so, I don't know. Go to that. Anyone in the room like to address the Commission? Anything that's not on today's agenda? Yes? Go, come on up.
My first time. Hi, I'm Rachel. I run for the Shetland Youth Connection, and I am the Outreach Specialist. Thank you for the opportunity to share, and more importantly, thank you for your continued support and partnership. At the Youth Connection, my role is to identify and engage young people ages 12 and 24 who are at risk or experiencing homelessness. This is not always easy. Youth are resilient and resourceful, often hiding their struggles as they try to survive. Our outreach van is on the streets every Tuesday, offering coffee, supplies, and connection to all experiencing homelessness in our community. This consistency allows us to build trust and connect young people to the services and stability they need. Every day, we hear heart-wrenching stories from the youth we serve, but we also see incredible resilience. In 2024, more than 7,000 youth came through our Shetland and Belfair Centers. Already in 2025, we have surpassed that number. Youth come to us for hot lunches, take-home food, hygiene items, and most importantly, the connection to caring adults who can help them navigate housing, education, and stability. Our Belfair Center continues to grow, expanding outreach and offering a safe place for youth in North Mason. Alongside our drop-in centers, we provide shelter and transitional housing, building a continuum of care that moves young people from crisis to permanent housing. Your support as county leaders make this possible. It allows us not only to meet urgent needs, but also to prepare for the future as we expand outreach partnerships and work towards 2026 with a stronger, more connected response for Mason County youth. Thank you again for investing in young people. Together, we are creating pathways out of homelessness and into stability, independence, and hope. And I personally would like to say I've worked there for almost two years now, and I'm very honored because within those two years, I've seen so many amazing youths, and I have kids of my own. And so, it's really, to my heart, it's Youth Connection's amazing, and I wish I had something like that when I was a teen, and I'm very blessed to be a part of the Youth Connection. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else in here? No? How about anyone in the Zoom room? All right. Going, going, gone. All right. Let's move on to item number six. Adoption of the Agenda.
Madam Chair, I move for adoption of today's agenda as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt the Agenda as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number seven, approval of minutes.
Madam Chair, I move we approve the minutes for August 11th, 18th, and 25th, 2025, and briefing minutes of August 19th, 2025, regular minutes.
I have a second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the August 11th, 18th, and 25th, 2025 briefing minutes and the August 19th, 2025, regular minutes. Any discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Moving on to item number eight, approval of our action agenda. Commissioners will read through the action agenda. Items can be removed for separate discussion and vote. Commissioner Netherland, if you'll take item 8.1 and 8.2. Commissioner Tarzwell, 8.3 through 8.6. And then I'll take 8.7 and 8.8.
Absolutely. Madam Chair, item number 8.1 reads, "Approval of Warrants and Treasures Electronic Remittance Claims" Clearing Fund, Warrant Number 8114594 through 8115215. The amount, $2,581,815.71. Direct Deposit Fund, Warrants Number 118949 through 119361. The amount, $984,815.90. Salary Clearing Fund, Warrants Number 7009063 through 7009105. The amount, $637,812.61. Item number 8.2, "Approval to Authorize Public Works to Advertise, Set Bid Opening Date and Time, Award Contract, and Allow the Chair to Sign All Pertinent Documents for the 2026 Manufacturing and Stockpiling of Chip Seal Aggregate."
Item 8.3, "Approval to Amend Budget to Cover Repair and Tire Replacement of a WSU Extension Noxious Weed Vehicle in the Amount of $5,554." 8.4, "Approval of the 2025 and 2026 Take-Home Vehicle Requests for Kelly Frazier, Jeremy Seymour, Grant Deschong, Rod Leroux, Roy Byerly, Pete Medcalf, John Ronald, Aaron Tesh, and Kelly Dunlap." Item 8.5, "Approval of the Consolidated Homeless Grant Subcontracts for the Years 26 and 27 with Crossroads Housing, New Horizons Communities, Turning Point Survivor Advocacy Center, and the Youth Connection." Item 8.6, "Approval to Surplus the Substance Use Mobile Outreach Recreational Vehicle for the Cost of $382.20 for Storage and $1,500 for Towing and Disposal Covered by the Department of Health Grant Funds."
Item 8.7, "Approval to Issue Request for Proposals for On-Call Hydraulic Services to Support a Range of Infrastructure, Capital, and Maintenance Projects that are Anticipated in the 2026 through 2027 Calendar Years for the County MRSC Consultant Roster With an Option for the County Engineer to Extend for an Additional Year, the Maximum Expenditure is Not Expected to Exceed $200,000 per Calendar Year." Item 8.8, "Approval to Authorize the Chair to Sign an Inter-Local Agreement with the City of Bremerton Regarding the Potential Provision of Sanitary Sewer Service from the Belfair Water Reclamation Facility." All right. Commissioners, having read through each or the action agenda, are there any items you would like to have removed for separate discussion or vote?
Yes, Madam Chair. Item number 8.4 and item number 8.8, not in opposition, but for further discussion and explanation.
Okay. All right. Anyone in the audience like anything removed for separate discussion or vote? Anyone in the Zoom room? All right. Let's move on to a motion.
Madam Chair, I move we adopt the action agenda, removing item 8.4 for further discussion and 8.8.
I have a second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the action agenda with the removal of 8.4 and 8.8 for separate discussion. Any discussion on the others? No? All right. Call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right. Let's move on to item 8.4, "Approval of the 2025-2026 Take-Home Vehicle Request for Kelly Frazier, Jeremy Seymour, Grant Deschong, Rod Leroux, Roy Byerly, Pete Medcalf, John Ronald, Aaron Tesh, and Kelly Dunlap." And would you like to do any explaining on this at all, or?
Oh, I thought the Commissioner liked to discuss it.
You can just open it up for discussion if they want.
I wanted to put Travis on the spot.
Well, I can explain more if you'd like to. I mean, the take-home vehicles are for essential county personnel who can be called in at any time to perform county functions in order to ensure that operations keep going 24 hours a day. And so, those are people who have been identified specifically to ensure that the county keeps operating for areas in their expertise. I have a second.
That was, that was great. Yeah. You get an A. Okay. Discussion?
Public comment?
Any public comment? All right. Seeing none, how about you?
Then, Madam Chair, I'm going to move that we approve the approval of the 2025-2026 Take-Home Vehicle Request for Kelly Frazier, Jeremy Seymour, Grant Deschong, Rod Leroux, Roy Byerly, Pete Medcalf, John Ronald, Aaron Tesh, and Kelly Dunlap. I'll have a comment first.
Second.
Motion and a second.
So, Madam Chair, I receive phone calls. Actually, surprisingly, I had a few people that were upset about this, not just one. I thought the first one just didn't understand, but there was a few. As was explained, this isn't just cars for anybody and everybody. That isn't how it works. Every one of them that gets one of these vehicles goes through a whole process that determines that it is absolutely necessary within their job set. There was a difference, one that was added this time, but this person actually takes care of an animal that is an animal for our law enforcement and for the jail. And it definitely is something that's absolutely needed. But I just wanted to make it really clear to the public, we're not just throwing out cars to everybody. These went through a whole process before they ever got to us, before we ever asked to put them forward.
Anything?
I agree.
Yeah. According to county policy, so if anybody has questions, take a look at the county policy. I believe it is called, it's Chapter 13.
No. There was a time many years ago where they were just getting, people were just getting them at random, but it doesn't work like that, not for many years here in Mason County.
All right. All right. Anything else? I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item number 8.8, "Approval to Authorize the Chair to Sign an Inter-Local Agreement with the City of Bremerton Regarding the Potential Provision of Sanitary Sewer Service from the Belfair Water Reclamation Facility." Any discussion? Anybody? Would you like to say anything about this, Loretta?
Sure. I would be happy to.
Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. Loretta Swanson, Public Works Utilities and Waste Management Director. This is an ILA that was crafted with the assistance of Commissioners with very specific language about the terms of potentially providing service to the Puget Sound Industrial Center area. And one of those items was defining a service area. Another key component is making sure that both of our general sewer plans are identifying a mutual service area. And then, there was also communication. There was a government-to-government meeting between Commissioners and Mayor Wheeler and council member and the city engineer talking through some very specific items about terms of service, including concerns about economic impacts, making sure that we're meeting permit compliance. I'm not going to hit all of the items, but those were a couple of the very key issues. So, this was an agreement that Commissioners agreed to, and we're forwarding that for the City of Bremerton to review and potentially execute.
Great. Thank you. Any questions for staff? All right. Any questions for the public for staff? All right. Thank you, Loretta.
You bet.
All right. Any public comment? Anyone in the Zoom room with a public comment?
Right.
Randy, you got to move your hand faster.
I know. I'll take a few personally. I think a lot of guns in here.
I hadn't thought of that.
I'm not sure if I should feel safe or be scared.
Depends on what you've done.
If that's, if that's the thing, I'm in big trouble. Hi, everybody. I'm Randy Lewis. I'm a native of Mason County and a proud graduate of Mountain View Grade School. I'm not opposed to the Bremerton Extension, per se, as long as the final deal is in the best interest of the citizens of Mason County. I've observed some public assertions that are confusing to me. Maybe I misinterpreted or something, so... One thing I'm concerned about is the assertion that if the final deal is not made immediately, it will die. Will you still kill the deal? Has Bremerton said the deal is dead unless Mason County immediately agrees to their conditions? Another assertion is that not signing the final deal before a feasibility study is performed is putting the cart before the horse. Not doing a feasibility study prior to signing an agreed-upon negotiated deal, that is putting the cart before the horse. Let's not fly blind. By feasibility study, I'm talking about generating and scrutinizing financial projections based on the cost of the agreed-upon build-out. In terms of the engineering feasibility of the actual build-out, I'll defer to my friend Will Harris on that, those issues. However, it all boils down to finances. Finances. In my world, if I were to sign off on a major initiative before appropriate financial projections are presented, I would have won a free trip to HR, kicked out of the academy, and likely sent to the pokey. To sign off on a final deal before this type of due diligence is performed is a Nancy Pelosi move. Oh, let's find out what's in it after we approve it. The Bremerton engineer commented that perhaps the next step is to do the math. Exactly. As a county taxpayer, I have several questions that include, what is the cost of the build-out? And who funds what part of it? Which entity collects what revenue under various potential negotiated fee structures? What are the financial implications for Mason County under no extension versus with the extension under various potential scenarios? It was asserted that it is not Bremerton's responsibility to compensate Mason County for the tens of millions Bremerton will save by not building their own infrastructure. At this point, no one has any responsibility to do anything until a final deal is negotiated and signed off by both entities. This is a negotiated item, not a given one way or the other. Concern over effect on Belfair businesses. Solution, Bremerton zones a new sewer area only allowing industrial use as its claim. That's all that Bremerton is interested in. No Home Depot, no homes allowed. The engineer claimed he would be devastated if the deal resulted in closure of Belfair businesses. Fine. Do the zoning, and his anxiety disappears. That's all I have. Thank you. I have to run off to another meeting, so don't take that personally.
Oh, we won't. Thank you, Annie. All right. Do we have anyone else that would like to make? Public comment? Anyone in the Zoom room? All right. Commissioners?
So, Madam Chair, I wanted to explain to the community, there is no secret, I'm not in favor of the project that's going on because I don't think it pencils out. But I want to, you need to give props when props are due. Our Commission looked at the original ILA, did a lot of hard work, and what they came back with was something that I agree that I would live with. And I appreciate their work And I appreciate their work because what they put together is a framework that kind of protects the county and allows us to go through some of the processes before we move forward on some of these things. And both Commissioners put in very important words into this thing that does protect us. One of the ones, there was a discussion about whether or not to hook up or not to hook up until we fix certain issues when it comes to the sewer system that we have now. One of the things that one of the Commissioners actually added into this, because this was not in the original, says that the following procedure items are required prior to serving the county, for the county to agree. One of them is item number B, the plans are submitted and approved by ecology. That's how we protect the county. So although, as I said, I'm not a fan of this, I am a fan when our commission does the good work that's necessary to make sure that we are protected and we have a chance to go through each and every item to make sure that it actually services this county. So with that being said, I will be, when we have motion, I will be being supportive of it. The tribe sent a text message, I'd like to see if you'd consider, I'm still going to vote for it even if you say no. But this is what they asked. They asked that we consider writing in that Bremerton will consult with the tribes. Says tribe and then parentheses S. I would like to see that added. I think that's a good thing because originally we were going to wait before we even did this until we had a meeting with all the stakeholders. So I know ecology and them is going to do it anyway. So how do you feel about that?
I don't know. I'd have to talk to our legal counsel to see what the verbiage looks like, but I have no objection to that. It's just, how do we, you know, what are the words that go in there? And, you know, get Tim to take a look at it.
Yeah. Well, their writing was, Bremerton must, I think, Bremerton shall consult with tribes is the only thing I'd be looking for.
Well, and I believe that that's one of the steps after the ILA is signed, that it's not over. This is just one step. And so I feel comfortable moving forward, especially with ecology, making sure that ecology is involved. I feel comfortable moving forward with this and know that this is not the final step.
Yeah, that would be one of my comments, somewhat in response to what Randy said, that we wouldn't sign a final document without doing these, going through these steps. Well, he's absolutely right. But this is not a final step. This is the next step we take to get to the negotiations and the final step. So he's absolutely right. We need to be responsible with the citizens' money, and this is the best way to move forward so that we can get a partner to fund the expansion, which we know we're going to have to do on the Belfair Sewer, or at least fund a major portion of it. In Bremerton's words, they said they charge a 50% excise fee on the sewer system of people that come into, that are out of area that use their services. So if we charge them 50% more than what we're charging Mason County residents, it's a significant amount of money coming in to offset the costs of expanding the sewer system, which we're going to end up needing to do. So I think it's a great step for the citizens of Mason County.
So I will not make a motion to add that in if there's no appetite for that. The other thing is something for myself is, after thinking about it, I'd love it if we added in the verbiage that if both parties sign that they will use some of that funding immediately for the feasibility study. I think that that's, everything's going to come down on the numbers, whether or not it works or not. And it would be nice if we knew that they could fund it out of that money. So I guess my request would be to add the verbiage that after signature, they would release enough for the feasibility study.
I hesitate to do that or to add that in there just because this was a grant, and I'm not sure if that language was in the grant. And what was, the grant was applied for specific things, and I'm not sure that, because they're very restrictive funds, as you know. And so I'm not sure that that is in that part of the commerce grant.
What if I said that they would either fund or fund out of the grant? The reason why I say this is it is for their benefit, the extension, the studying for them, they should cover the cost of that. I don't care if it's covered out of the grant money or out of their other, so. Just simplifying it just to make sure that that's where we can go with the next step, get the numbers done.
I think item G on this ILA might cover that.
Item G?
Letter G.
No. But if we added the word, you know, for Bremerton with grant to fund a feasibility
I'm comfortable moving forward with this language just because we've worked on it so hard for so long, and we're, we all know that we're not going to do something that's not a benefit for Mason County.
And I don't disagree with that, but the part I will say is always a good policy makes, good fences make for good neighbors, good policy makes for good fences, good contracts make for good policy. Having it in the contract seems like a no-brainer to me because it is simplifying that we will do the feasibility, which again, that's, everything is going to be based on that, and it should come from either this grant or from them instead of us paying for it.
We've had this draft since March. And so I do not want to push this down the road any further.
Well, if you want, I can make it in the form of a motion and you can deny it or not. I'll just go ahead and do, Madam Chair, I move that we amend this to include the verbiage under section G. Upon signature, Bremerton will award funds for a feasibility study, either through grant or direct from the city of Bremerton.
Madam Chair, if I might, the, this is discussion that. One of the problems that Bremerton's going to have is if we don't put a number, a dollar value on that, they're going to say, well, what does this feasibility study cost? So it causes a ripple effect to how it impacts this ILA. I think that's, I think the, paying for the feasibility study is something that goes on to the next step, how you negotiate the, you know, what fees are they going to be providing to Mason County to fund not only the feasibility studies, but as we talked about earlier, the monitoring station of the things like that. These are all things that we're going to have to put in that benefit Belfair, protects Mason County, but it is for their benefit. We wouldn't necessarily, we wouldn't put them in unless we were doing this agreement. So those are the sort of things that we have to work through the negotiation. I think that's, it falls into that next step.
And I agree that having a dollar amount does make a difference, especially when we're doing, I can't deny that. But I could, we could easily adjust that by saying not to exceed. My problem is I just don't want to have us have to pay for anything on top of it, but not to exceed 250,000, we'll say. That at least gives a cap if anything above that has to come back for us for either their agreement or our agreement. And put that cap would protect both sides on that. I, that was a good addition because if I was on the other side, I wouldn't want to leave it open-ended, that's for sure. So since it wasn't second, I'll amend my motion to put a dollar amount of not exceed
Can you read that motion back?
It would be, so your motion would be, if seconded, approval to authorize the chair to sign an interlocal agreement with the city of Bremerton regarding the potential provision for sanitary sewer service from the Belfair Water Reclamation Facility with the amendment under item G. Upon signature, Bremerton will award funds to pay for feasibility study not to exceed
Okay. We can live with that.
Do we have a second?
I'm still trying to figure out how that fits in this agreement.
For my discussion, I'm ready to just move it forward the way that it is.
Yeah. I tend to agree with what you were saying, Sharon, as I read through this. Belfair wastewater facility capacity upgrades, 1.4 million.
This is just for the money from Congress.
Yeah, I know. I'm not seeing how that, your comment about it's covered under item G, I think is probably true, that that's, that is the feasibility, part of the feasibility study is paid for in that. 1.4 million. It's not specifically called out in that, but it's also not excluding that.
And the reason why I bring it forward is because that is the most important part for moving forward with anything, is having the feasibility, seeing exactly what the costs are, what the benefit is, what the risk assessment is, perhaps when the monies would come in, what it would look like on a 20-year schematic. But if it's not in there, then it won't be in there. Then it could still just be anything else. That's why I just put in the verbiage, just like putting the dollar amount as a maximum.
Yeah, I think, I think it's already covered, just not specifically called out, but it's not, it's also not excluded from that 1.4 million.
All right. So the motion can die without a second. Do we have another motion?
I move, Madam Chair, I move we sign the interlocal agreement between Mason County and the city of Bremerton related to sanitary sewer service provision.
I'll second.
All right. We have a motion and a second to authorize the chair to sign an interlocal agreement with the city of Bremerton regarding the potential provision of sanitary sewer service with the Belfair Water Reclamation Facility. Any more discussion?
Again, thank you for the work that did go into it. I appreciate it. Although I'm not supportive of the project, I can't see how it pencils out. I just can't. But, you know, when we have a feasibility, if we get a feasibility, then that's when we would decide whether or not, it does pencil out, whether Mason County benefits or loses by participating in this adventure. But with that being said, again, I want to point out to the community, although I am not in favor of it, sometimes when you're Commissioners, you disagree. But you can't just pick up your ball and go home when you disagree. And as soon as we vote on something, then it's time for us to pull together and try to make that work. So with that being said, I will still be voting in favor of it, even though I disagree with the project because I don't think it will pencil. Hopefully for us, we will make the very next adventure endeavor into this a true feasibility so we can make sure that we're doing right, because I think this is the biggest decision I've had before me in the last decade.
It's a big one, that's for sure. Any further discussion?
Nope.
All right. I'll call for the vote. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes. Sweet. All right. Let's move on to item number nine, other business. Do we have any department heads or elected officials that would like to state your name and what your office is? I know. Please do not read through all of those.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioner Netherton, Commissioner Tarzwell. In accordance with RCW, I'm Steve Dunkle, Mason County. In accordance with RCW 3640.040, I am presenting to you the preliminary budget for fiscal year 2026 as prepared by the Auditor's Office Financial Services Department, to whom I give much thanks, led by our CFO, Leo Kim. They're an excellent team, and they put a lot of incredible preparation into this preliminary budget, and it took a lot of heavy lifting physically and procedurally and a ton of attention Here's your copy.
And there were no paper cuts, right? Leo, safety first.
Stitches, but no paper cuts.
For the board and for our administrator. Here you go, sir.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it.
So I reviewed the budget line by line, item by item. For the general fund, the preliminary budget totals $70,607,556. This is $486,770 less, 0.6%, less than the budget approved in 2025 for the general fund. The preliminary budget for the special and enterprise funds totals $123,602,642. This is an increase of 9.97, or excuse me, $9,979,951 over the 2025 budget, or an increase of 8.7%. The grand total for all funds is $194,210,198. And again, that's an increase of $9,770,790, or 5.3% over the 2025 budget. This budget assumes for the beginning fund balance for the general fund, the general fund, $24 million. This is 2.6 million less than the beginning fund balance of 26.6 million in 2025. The budget projects an estimated ending fund balance for the general fund of $10,013,279. So at this rate, we risk finishing 2026 with a reserve deficit per resolution 2021-34. Fortunately, the board has not, had not filled a number of open employee positions that were approved in 2025, and that was heeding the warning from Commissioner Netherton at the beginning of the year with Commissioner Tarzwell's concurrence. And that has kept us from being in riskier financial, in a riskier financial position relative to the current expense cash balance and the policy-protected reserves. To retain and fill these positions in the 2026 budget risks putting us on an unsustainable path. With our current rate of expenditure, the treasurer noted in the second quarter finance committee report that we are in a reserve deficit of 3.4 million relative to the 25% policy reserve level. Resolution 2021-034 requires that the county include in its annual budget a plan to restore reserves and/or reserve fund balance to the required levels. We'll want to reassess this once the reserve levels are recalculated to reflect 2025 general fund expenditures. So with that, I look forward to the good work that you will do as a board under Madam Chair's leadership to make sound decisions and adjustments to the budget through department-level budget workshops and the required public hearings to put us on a solid fiscal path for 2026. Thank you, and thank you once again, Leo, and to the rest of the financial services team. You guys are great. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question first, Mr.?
Yes, sir.
The three million plus, that was the treasurer's number that expected to be backwards?
Yes.
Were you saying, okay.
So that's a three-point, according to the treasurer's report, 3.4, where'd I have it? 3.49 million deficit against a 25% policy reserve level.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other department heads or elected officials? Any department heads or elected officials in the Zoom room?
Madam Chair, she did. You're pulling the trigger quick today.
Yes, I am. I am so fast. I did not have my cup of coffee this morning, so I might be a little trigger-happy.
She blew up the machine twice.
I had three. Good morning, Loretta Swanson. Just wanted to thank Commissioners for attending the tour for the Belfair facility last week and certainly acknowledge the fine work of our team. And Lindsey Beam, our operator three, led the tour and provided great information to us all about ongoing and continued operating improvements, and it was a very positive meeting in my happy little perspective. So I look forward to that. We've got established quarterly meetings with ecology, and of course, our operators have been meeting on a monthly basis to basically learn, grow, continue our great operating that's going on out there. So just wanted to say thank you very much and acknowledge the great work that's been happening. And of course, Richard leads that effort, and so want to acknowledge Richard as well. It takes a team. He leads a great team.
So I already shared with you, but ecology made it very clear that our staff was exceptional and that, I'm not sure I would have put it in the same happy thing as he would have for the stuff that they said, but they said it could have been much worse, except for the exceptional. That word exceptional was used. The quality of our staff, how much work and how hard they've come and how far they've been coming. It was a pretty doggone high compliment, and you have a lot to be proud of with that because they literally look at our people with great respect, and that sure makes it great when you have to work with another government entity if they respect your people. And that sure makes it great when you have to work with another government entity if they respect your people. So thank you for that, guys.
Yeah, well, that and with anything where you are a permitted agency, integrity and professionalism and honesty is everything. And I cannot say enough about Richard and the team's efforts in that regard, so that's.
I want to clarify, they also complimented the man that wasn't there when I told you. The one that was outside. There was Lindsey and then there was the other guy.
Joe.
Joe. I thought it was Joe, but that's such a generic name, I thought I probably kind of been pulling that out of my rear end. Okay. And Joe, they, they were complimenting him very highly as well.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Thank you. It was a great tour, too. The mosquitoes were a little heavy, but hazards of, of going up there.
Just out of that, a mosquito bites you after getting into that, it might not be.
Oh, no.
Never crossed my mind.
Very good. All right. All right, any, anyone else before I move too quickly into the next phase? Okey-dokey. Anything from our, from Travis?
No.
No? All right. And before we move into our calendars, I do want to thank Leo and, and Michelle and Shannon and Jenny and, and Robin. You guys are awesome and you, you, you keep us on our toes, so we appreciate it.
I, I also would like to thank you. I know all the work you guys go and put into it. I appreciate all that hard work. And Mr. Auditor, I appreciate your, your words. And that's one of the beauties about this, though, it's a preliminary budget. So we'll go through, we'll knock it out and we'll make it better. That's what we, that's what we do. So appreciate your diligence or due diligence on that. And as well as the treasurer upstairs for going through and doing all the work. This is her first year in doing all this. I personally think she's doing a wonderful job. I just want to put it out there. I think she's.
Doing an awesome job.
And she's got, she replaced one of the most important people in this whole county. I will tell you, somebody who's been here so long. Replacing Lisa seems impossible, but she picked somebody or she recommended somebody. We picked them, like, that had many, many, many years of experience and is standing tall. So thank you for that. Thank you for all of your hard work and all your staff, please don't.
I'll take that payment later. All right, let's move on to, we have no hearings today. So we'll move on to item number 11, Board's Calendar to End Reports. Commissioner Tarzwell, Commissioner Netherton, and then I'll follow.
I spent the bulk of last week in, in Wenatchee at Lawsec. Training, Neo Training and Conference. We saw some pretty amazing things going on there. They, we got to drive hydrogen cars, which was, was a lot of fun. Pretty, pretty interesting.
Real?
Real hydrogen cars.
That's cool.
Yeah.
Okay, this time I'm jealous. I would have loved to have done that.
Well, it was strange. There was very few people that were willing to drive them. I said, I'll drive it. This sounds like fun. It really snaps your head back when you stop on it. So they've got serious pickup, so that, anyway. Interesting cars.
Did you get any pictures?
Probably have some.
If you don't mind sharing to the, because I would love to see that.
Yeah, I'm the world's worst photographer. I, I always forget to take pictures, so I'll see.
As do I.
I, I, I did get to take some pictures of the helicopters and the B-17 and the Corsair and things like that. But the hydrogen car was interesting and it's something that I think our, our PUDs would be interested in looking at. They run their, in Douglas County, they run their turbines on their hydro generators at a constant speed. And they vary the load to accommodate. So when the load is high by the consumers, they reduce the, they reduce the usage at a hydrogen generating plant. And when they, by maintaining a constant speed on their, their turbines, they reduce the wear so much that it basically pays for the operation for creating hydrogen, which is, is a pretty good idea for what they're doing. But running that system that way, they basically have free hydrogen. They have a hydrogen dispensing facility. They sell, they sell hydrogen at $4 a kilo and the cars get 80 miles per kilo, so they're pretty, pretty efficient. So it's just, it's a normal car. You plug into it like, like a quick disconnect and then it takes over and fills it with hydrogen. So it's, it's a, it's a really awesome process. But they're also working on bringing in, what they, as a company, is called Helion, which is a fusion generator, and it's a unique method of fusion. Most fusion generators are like a nuclear power plant. They generate heat, create steam, and steam-driven turbines. They, they create electrons in the fusion reaction and tap those off directly. So they take out the mechanical step and they go directly to electricity. They're, they took us to a facility they're building. It's a 50-megawatt system. That's the size of a shipping container. They're very small. They generate no nuclear waste. And after 12 years, they become self-sustaining. They generate their own fuel and then it becomes basically free energy. Their, Microsoft bought the first one. They have, they have, this is the seventh one they've built. But Microsoft bought the first one to put up a server farm. It's going to be one of the biggest server farms in the nation. And it's going to run off of this hydrogen plant. So it's something that would be very interesting for our PUDs to look at as a way to bring in things like server farms and so bringing more jobs and more, more economic diversity into Mason County, which I really would love to pursue that. Those were the, the highlights. Those were really, really exciting technologies. And they're kind of looking for partners, so we'll go after that. That was most of, I spent most of last week at that. So coming up this week, I have the Lines for Healthy South Sound tomorrow at 11:00. I have a doctor's appointment on Thursday to see if he can figure out what's wrong with my shoulder. I'll be with Steve at a candidate training on Thursday night. Then Friday, 10:00, 10:00 AM, I have a Housing and Behavioral Health Advisory Board Commission chambers. I have a speaking engagement Friday night up at Wilderness Northwest. Then I finally get to go see a kidney doctor next Monday, which is really something I've been. I hope he's able to do something for me.
It's sad when that's what you're looking forward to.
Kidney stones are not fun. Then I have a MaceCom be, more, MaceCom meeting next week, next Tuesday. Then basically start all over, but that pretty much covers it.
Okay, Mason Transit Authority, yeah. So I attended a Fire District Four meeting. And are you aware that our, I say our Abe Gardner because he was here. He worked here. He worked his way up through the ranks, then he got stolen from North Mason Regional Fire Authority. He was just selected as a commissioner for Fire District Four. That man has done some incredible things. And speaking of him during this last week, I also was with him in the opioid overdose awareness events. Belfair was the biggest one we'd ever had by far. Shelter looked like it may have also exceeded their, their amounts. They had more vendors than anybody than they'd ever had before. But of course, the events were absolutely wonderful. We had a work-study session. We had a Belfair sewer walkthrough, Port Allen meeting. We had a special meeting together with Mason Transit Authority. And then I had the left board this morning. So after this, I have some stuff that I can't read. I have a Mount Moriah. This week, we have a special dinner once a year where we celebrate the lives that we have lost. But also, we recognize the widows and orphans of all other Masons. And we have a special dinner to, to remind us that that is our care. It is one of our great cares to take care of those that are left behind from our friends, our families, or brothers, if you're a Mason. That's your duty, but it's all of our duty every day. And we don't take that lightly, so I wanted to pass that out there. Rotary Meeting, Hook Canal Cornea Council, Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority. North Mason School District has a bond meeting going on. I have a finance committee for the Olympic Regional Clean Air Authority. We may all be at a sheriff's breakfast, League of Women Voters, and that brings us back and we'll do some of this stuff all over again.
Sounds like fun. All right, so tomorrow I have a Lewis-Mason-Thurston AAA Advisory Council meeting where I pop in usually. I have a code enforcement meeting on Wednesday with Dave and Travis and Ian. And then I've got a meeting with Alice Taylor and Charlie Walsh regarding some of their concerns. And then I'm going to be in Fosser for Thursday and Friday, but Friday I have a postwork board meeting, so it won't be all fun and games. And then briefing back on Monday. My granddaughter's birthday is the ninth, so I want to wish Stephanie a happy birthday. And then Tina are flying to Texas, so we will be gone Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday next week. And then we're back the following week for briefings and starting it all over again. So there we have it. Anything else, commissioners? Nothing else?
Read the budget, sorry. To get off on the numbers. Madam Chair, I move we adjourn. Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you, guys.